Good evening. Today is Monday, May 5th, 2025, and we are at the Green Ladel. We'll call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. We will start committee member introductions with Counselor Harriman.
Scott Harriman, City Council Representative to the School Committee.
Donnycollant Ward 7.
Megan Heard Ward 6.
Iman Osman Ward 5.
Elizabeth Eames Ward 3.
Janet Bowden Ward 2.
Phoenix McGlaughlin Ward 1.
Megan Parks at large.
Jake Langley Superintendent.
Karen Paket Assistant Superintendent.
Our Ward 3 representative is absent, excused this evening. Agenda item number 3 is to receive and potentially vote on the nomination for Dawn Bishop for the Assistant Director Position of Multilingual Learner Program.
So Director Macklemore will come up. And as you, as you may know, we had two positions opening at different timeframes, coming together pretty quickly, but we had some excellent applicants and happy to bring one candidate before you last week. And the second candidate, who was someone that we know well from years past, who left us to gain a little more experience and come back to us ready to roll. I'm sure Liza will do an introduction.
You took my first paragraph, so thank you. Good evening. I am very excited to stand in front of you tonight to introduce you or reintroduce you to Dawn Bishop, who is being nominated as the Assistant Director for the Multilingual Learner Program. As Jake said, we had two vacancies. And they, they came very close to one another. Both of the previous Assistant Directors had some personal circumstances and is requiring both of them to move out of state between now and the end of the school year. But I'm thrilled to introduce you to Dawn, who is returning to us from being in another school district in an ESOL leadership role and a previous school district before that in another leadership role. He has a Masters in TSAL. He has teaching experience with us. He was an instructional coach with us. And we couldn't be more excited to welcome him back in this new capacity.
Thank you. Did you want to share anything with us, or would you like us to vote first?
I guess I would just say that I'm excited at the opportunity to return to a system that frankly has done a lot for me in the past. And so I just thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Member Heard.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion and thank you for clarifying that. I text Jake before the meeting. I'm like, what the heck happened to Hayden? Like what's happening? I think, I feel like we just went through this. But I would like to make a motion for the nomination for Dawn Bishop for the Assistant Director Position for the Multilingual Learner Program.
A second thought.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Welcome back. Agenda item number 5 is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items members would like set aside? Seeing none, the Consent Agenda is adopted. Agenda item number 6 is Public Input. Members of the public may address the School Committee for up to three minutes on non-agenda items now and on agenda items later. Speakers must adhere to our public comment policy, which is available on the, in the back of the room or on the LPS website. These meetings exist to conduct School Committee business. The purpose of public comment is to share thoughts on school and educational matters. Committee members and school staff will not reply during this time. Comments must be directed to the Chair and be civil. By law, comments may not pertain to specific staff or students. Comments about individuals must be directed privately to the appropriate LPS staff member. Student privacy must be maintained. Public comment period is 30 minutes unless extended due to unusual circumstances. Priority goes to Lewiston residents and parents, students, or employees of Lewiston Public Schools. Before starting, please state your name, town, or city of residence and affiliation to Lewiston Public Schools. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move along to Agenda Item Number 7 to receive an update from the Lewiston Middle School Student Leadership Group.
Hi, my name is Emma Dearborn. I'm an 8th grader on Team Olympic.
Hi, my name is Joyce Boyama, and I'm also an 8th grader on Team Olympic.
Hi, I'm Adel Bro. I'm a 7th grader on Team Denali.
Hello, I'm Ayanna John. I'm an 8th grader on Team Yosemite.
As a student council, we were asked by Assistant Superintendent Paket to put together a presentation in order to update our school board and committee on all the positive things currently happening at LMS. As we all know, because of social media, there are some incorrect perspectives and assumptions about our school. This is our way to combat this and make sure that our community is aware of what our school is really like.
First up, we have spring sports. Our spring athletics season at LMS recently began and is going well. Girls and boys lacrosse are both mid-season and actually just earlier today had a home game against Falmouth Middle School. Our softball and baseball teams have their first game tomorrow, as well as their track meet with their first meet. And then here we have pictures. I couldn't get pictures of everyone, but we have pictures of the softball and girls lacrosse team. And I think the boys lacrosse team were in the background in one of them.
Our theater program is currently in tech week for their upcoming performance for Typecast. Opening night is May 15th if you're interested in coming. Tickets will be $5 at the door. This will be our last show for the 2024-2025 school year. So be sure to show up and show your demon pride. Enjoy the show. And here are some of the photos from our last musical, Something Rotten.
Our 21st Century Program is run by our librarian, Mrs. Doyon, and is currently in partnership with Coast of Maine. And Coast of Maine is donating 10 bags of soil for 21st Century's ongoing gardening project, learning how to grow plants. And at the end, each student will be able to bring home their own plant, as well as their own growing kit.
Last Friday, our school brought back a longstanding LMS tradition. Our school's last Pride Assembly was in 2015, and we were so excited to get it going again. Our school is filled with so much talent, from dancing routines to fabulous singers and everything in between. Awards were given and the whole school was closed out with the cha-cha slide done by our student government and an energetic performance of Girls Just Want to Have Fun from our fabulous LMS staff members. There's, should be pictures. On the left, it's the staff members. And the right bottom, that's students.
Our student government, it's us, of over 30 members is constantly working to make our school a better place. Here are some of our best work from the past two years. We've attended citywide equity summits. This Saturday, we attended a Model UN conference at Bates and student council conferences. And we most recently completed a project to update our core values and mission statement written on our website so that they better reflect who we are as a school. And here you have some pictures of us at the Equity Summit and then us last Saturday at Bates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from committee members? Member Gallant?
I'd just like to say thank you for the presentation. I know it's not easy to do public speaking sometimes, but you did a fabulous job. Thank you.
I want to say thank you as well. They were very welcoming to me when I went to visit a couple of weeks ago and look forward to visiting with them again. One of the things I wanted to point out was, one of the big topics of conversation was the negativity about Lewiston on social media and the things that don't get celebrated that they think, that they thought were, were going really well. And so to the point made at the beginning of the presentation, I, I suggested that might be one of the things that they share with all of us, as well as with the community. And I think that they are willing to come back on a, on a regular basis to, to, to share what's going on. And I look forward to meeting with them again to hear about some input on some of our, our policies and other issues that, that may be happening in the school or in the district. So thank you again, and thank you, Mr. Joy, for, for being their fearless leader.
Thank you all. Member Eames?
I was just glad to see there are 30 represented. I mean, this was a subset, that there were actually 30 active members, so that's really wonderful.
I just want to say great job. Thank you, Mr. Joy, and all the students did a great, great job.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Agenda item number 8 is to receive Lewiston Public Schools' recognition.
So we have a few things tonight, but I'd like to start by inviting up Adam Hanson, so we can share a few things about Jackie Smith, who was recently recognized at ASBO. But Adam, do you want to share a little bit about the recognition itself before we go further?
Good evening. It's my great privilege to come and share with you about the award that was recently received by Jackie Smith, our Senior Accountant. Jackie has been a longtime faithful member of the Main Association of School Business Officials. And at our meeting last month, she was presented with the annual award, the annual Dave Holden Award, which goes to the outstanding school business official in Maine for the year. So she received this lovely plaque, and it was well-earned. So I want to say congratulations to Jackie. Why don't you come on up here? And Jackie is retiring at the end of June. She's been with us for three years and has done amazing things to help us transform our business office to be what we want it to be. So, and I've worked with her previously in Auburn. So this is going to be a big transition for me. I'm going to miss her greatly. And congratulations on your award and your retirement.
Thanks, Adam.
And we, we still want, we still want Jackie to know that she can rescind her resignation, her retirement, or she'd like. But when we talk about our detail and our accuracy and reconciling things, for a long time, we wouldn't, we didn't have the capacity to reconcile things as well as we'd like to. And so when you see these anomalies and these, these corrective measures that we had to take over the years, we worked really hard collectively to get to where we needed to be. But that was finally able to happen when Jackie joined the team because of her attention to detail and her, her processes. She's really super, super good at making sure the books are done right and that they reconcile out. So Jackie, we're incredibly appreciative to you. And like I said, if you want to choose to stay on longer and not retire, we would certainly be willing to entertain that conversation, but we do have a certificate for you.
Thank you, everybody. I want to say this was certainly a surprise to receive this award. I want to give kudos to our business office and to Adam. He's, he's an awesome leader and a great mentor, and we have a really good team. And I think we're leaving it in a good place, and I, I'm grateful for that. I also want to say what a great organization Maine ASBO is for all the schools. And it's great to have that resource, and I'm glad that we're involved with that. It's super important. So thank you all. And I won't miss working in Lewiston, but I will come back and visit. And I'm available by phone for any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments from committee members?
And next up, Natasha, do you want to come up to help kick this one off?
I did send you an email with the link. I want to just share a little bit of some work that we've been doing at the Student Resource Center. We had a group of four girls. Leah, Nora, Lauren, and Ansley, two of them can't be here tonight. But they came, they spent weeks down at our Resource Center, working with us, going through the donations, packing bags for students, painting a resource guide box for us, and created a resource guide. So these girls have spent hours of learning what the program does for students and families, and then took some resources that we already had that were just like chickens or a bunch of different papers, put it together into a very visual, a very beautiful, like visual resource guide that families can go to. And we kind of turned it into a QR code, and we're going to put it in the back of our cards that we hand out to families, so they can view it through the QR code. And then they can also have it as a printout. And then throughout the resource guide, there are some just great resources. It'll be a revolving, you know, guide will be living in there, but we can change the URL through the same QR code, which is great. So yeah, so these girls have spent many hours working with us and developing this for us. So I don't know if you guys want to share anything of what you guys experienced.
Hi, I'm Nora Gilmer. I'm a first-year student at Bates College this year. Honestly, it's such a great honor to work with Natasha and everything that they do at the Resource Center. Our hope with creating this document is that it is a living document, and it's going to continue to grow as like different programs come and go throughout the county. And so one of our greatest hopes, as we went through all of the resources, was the only thing worse than no resource grad is one with like the wrong information. And so just making sure that everything is up to date, accurate, and just as streamlined as possible, honestly. So that's all I have to say.
Hi, everyone. My name is Leah Broda. I'm also a first-year student at Bates College. And getting to work with Natasha and the Resource Center was such an incredible privilege and incredible opportunity, and we were all able to learn so much. And it was so, so incredible to just be able to be there and get to connect with the community. And to get to work on this guide was really, really great to not only be able to consolidate the resources, but make sure that students and their families have easy and accessible access to these resources, where they are all in one place. And I think, kind of echoing what Nora said, but the worst thing about resources is not knowing that you have access to them. And I think that this guide is a great, great demonstrative to showcase to families and students what they do have access to, because there are so many incredible resources in Lewiston, in Auburn, and in Andrews, in Andrews-Coggan County and across the state that so many families have access to. And I really, really hope that this document helps show them that there are great, that there are great resources for them.
There's one more picture if you want to show the box that they painted. So this box will live outside, kind of like a lending box, like for books. We'll put the resource guide in there, as well as some different things we thought, are thinking of other things to put in the box. There's another link for the pitcher in the, making it complicated. So we can put the, we're going to put a ticket in to get the box put into the grant outside. So when we are closed and off hours, the families still, if they go down there, they can still have access to the resource guide and information. So we could even put the QR code maybe on the box.
So. Nice and easy access.
Yes. I just want to say thank you, girls.
Yeah, thank you.
For participating in this and, and helping us with this. It was a big job. And I had one, high hopes of doing it, and I just knew I needed a lot of help. So very appreciative.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Just want to add, thank you, obviously from me, but also to Bates as a whole, for all the great work they do in our community. I think I saw Darby sneaking out back. But Darby is constantly reaching out to us and looking for ways to connect students to community, to the betterment, I think, of the work that we're trying to do. So thank you back there, Darby, also. We do have certificates for you.
Agenda item number nine is to receive access for ELL's English proficiency, English proficiency assessment results for 2025.
All right. So I'm here to talk about the Access for ELL's test results for the 2025 school year. Each year, students who are identified as multilingual learners in the state of Maine are required to participate in the Access for ELL's assessment, which measures students' language proficiency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. Students take the assessment each year until they demonstrate proficiency. And so ever since I have been the director, we have, I've come each year to share the results, the, the updates and, and trends that we're noticing. There was a handout in your packet that also gave a visual of what these results looked like. But I'm so excited to share that this year we had 117 students who demonstrated proficiency on the assessment and will exit the Multilingual Learner Program going into the next school year. So as you can see, I included some historical data. In 2022, we only exited 65 students from our program. Each year, that number has increased. 2023 was 79, 2024 was 106. And this year, we're up to 117. So we are certainly trending in the right direction. I also included our exit rate, which I include with caution, because, you know, those numbers can be interpreted in very different ways. You'll notice that since 2020, up until this year, we've increased our exit rate, as well as the state exit rate comparing, moving closer to the state exit rate, if you look in that last column. You'll notice that our exit rate did take a slight dip this year, which is something we are definitely looking into. But our preliminary analysis shows that we, we have registered several hundred newcomer students who are branded to the country this year. And because of that, and, and the fact that data shows that it takes anywhere from five to seven years to attain proficiency in English, that could be a contributing factor. We can't say with certainty, because we haven't finished our data analysis, but that could be a contributing factor to the decrease in our exit rate. We also, our enrollment is up significantly. In fact, as of this afternoon, we had 1,997 multilingual learners in our program. I also can tell you, I screened four more this afternoon. So we may break the, the 2,000 enrollment mark as soon as tomorrow. And so we had a significantly higher number of students participating in the assessment this year as compared to last year. But we're still really excited with the test results. And I think it's showing, it's showing how much work and emphasis that we've placed on creating an equitable learning environment and focusing on the needs of multilingual learners in, in our schools. The chart at the bottom also shows the, the trends by grade levels. There are some really great things that you can see on this chart, and also some things that we need to look a little deeper into. You can see our 4th and 5th graders are doing amazing. These, these are the grade levels where the most number of students are exiting our program, which again aligns with, with research that shows that it takes about five to seven years to, to attain proficiency in English. But you can see the green bars show this year's number. So we're up in grade 4, grade 5. We've also put a big emphasis on our middle school age students. So you can see we're up in grade 7, grade 8, and grade 9, which is a huge accomplishment, because those historically have been some of the hardest grade levels for students to exit our program. Although we do remain concerned about grade 6, though I will say nationally, this, this data point is, is very on-trend with what we're seeing across the nation, although not an excuse, something that we definitely need to look further into, as well as our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. So we do have more analysis to, to do and more research to, to gather. But this is a huge accomplishment for us and for many of our schools. I also want to just take a moment to highlight one school in particular. Montelo Elementary exited 28 students out of their multilingual program this year. And so I just wanted to give a big shout out to them. Our ESOL teachers there who are so committed and work so hard. And they're, the results are showing that. So I'm, I'm very excited to share that with you tonight.
Questions or comments? Member McGlaughlin?
Could you say more about just the grade makeup? I am having a somewhat hard time understanding why it's so huge for 4 and 5, and then zero for grade 6. Is it because, like, students will come in in kindergarten and you will identify them right away? And then so by 4 or 5, and then the grade 6, just for some reason?
Yeah, so the, the grade 6 piece is, is a bit complex. So you're absolutely right. We identify most students in kindergarten if they come to us in kindergarten. And so knowing that it takes five to seven years, school years, to attain proficiency in English, it makes sense that that 4th grade, 5th grade is where you see the majority of students exiting. As far as the 6th grade goes, there are different grade spans for the assessment. And anytime you see a, the grade span switch, for example, grade 4, 5 is its own assessment. And then we have a grade 6, 7, 8 is its own assessment. And so anytime you switch, you do tend to see a slight dip. But I think as far as just the makeup of 6th graders, the social and emotional needs, changes happening to young pre-teens, that, that generally is shown in a lot of our academic data, that there's a dip in 6th grade, and Access for ELLs is no different.
Were there 6th graders that took the access, the access exam?
Yes.
Okay. There are, they're still participating in that grade level.
Yes, they still participate. We're just not seeing students score that 4.5 to, to exit the program.
Thank you. Member Heard?
Thank you. So this is kind of a question for you, but also for Jake. We don't, students can enroll as late as the last day of school? Like, there's no cutoff when students can enroll?
That's correct.
So you're potentially getting kids for like a couple days? And so like as a district, what do we, like, for you, for instance, like, what would you do in that instance if you have a student or, you know, a family or someone that comes in and they're registering, there's like three days of school left? What does that look like?
So we, we explained to them that they have a right to enroll in public school and that, you know, we, we can certainly do that for them. As we get closer to the end of the school year, we like to make sure that parents are, are well-informed of the decisions that they're making, knowing that you can register today. That doesn't mean that you start school tomorrow. It sometimes takes time to review the paperwork, to get them processed, to get busing set up. And so we help them make the decision as to whether or not it makes sense for them to enroll for just a few days, or if they'd rather just enroll for the upcoming school year. I would say it's, it's, we have some who opt to wait, and we have some who want their kiddos in school as soon as possible. So we just make sure that they, they know that they have a right to go to school, even if it is just for, you know, two or three days, if it, if it were towards the end of the school year. But that ultimately, it's their, their decision as to what they want to do. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Member Gallant?
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to be a dead horse here. But so in grade 6, no one passed the assessment scores that were needed. So what is the protocol for that? What going forward for 26, is there a protocol or is there a plan?
As far as what we'll do to try to address that?
Right.
So that's something that's definitely. So that's something that's definitely still in the works. I mean, if you look at the, if you look at the past years, it's been a trend that has been ongoing. And like I said, it's a trend that, that's seen nationwide as well. Some things that I know we will do immediately without finishing our analysis is we need to continue to offer professional development and support to those grade six teachers. We also have tried to explore some unique ways of getting students motivated because it, it is important to acknowledge that this is one data point, right? And it's not the end all be all and, and it doesn't demonstrate exactly what a student can do for their, their educational career. It's what they were able to demonstrate on that one day when they took the assessment. And so we want to make sure that we get students motivated for the assessment. We want to make sure students understand the importance of the assessment. We've brought in students. We, we've brought in students from the high school to some of our elementary schools to, to kind of give some pep talks and explain. But I think that's something that we'll probably want to revisit going into next year because this is the first year in the past four that we haven't had any sixth graders exit. And so that, that definitely is concerning and will be an area of emphasis for next year. You're welcome.
From like a statistical perspective, if there's so many students testing out in grade four and five, are there fewer students taking the test in sixth grade or is it still a large population?
It's still a large population because we're constantly enrolling new students. But we do tend to see a slightly smaller amount in sixth grade. Yeah.
Just one other question. Is, can you remind me, is this the only way that students leave this program? So even if they might come in and you think, well, they don't need five years, but maybe just one or two, but still they have to test out. Once they're in.
Yeah. Per the state of Maine, it's, it, this is the only way to exit the program, which is why we, we, we celebrate our exits very cautiously. It's something that we obviously want. We want our students to exit our program and they are exiting our program. But we also want to place as much emphasis on growth because it is very well possible that students will enter our schools and they'll never score a 4.5 and demonstrate proficiency. That's not what we hope for, but that sometimes is reality. And so we want to make sure that we're looking at growth and placing as much celebration on growth as we are exiting, which is part of the upcoming analysis. We'll get growth targets from the Maine Department of Education and we'll be able to look at that as well. And that will be something that, that's when we have conversations with students, that's really where we place our emphasis.
Member Bowden?
Thank you. So just in looking at the chart, it looks like we went down this year with proficiency, but I'm assuming it's because a lot more students took it. So what was the difference between 24 and 25 as far as how many students took the proficiency test?
I could get you the exact numbers, but I believe it's around 300 more students took the test in 2025 than they did in 2024. And the majority of those new students are students who are brand new to the country with very limited English proficiency and who are in our newcomer programs.
I feel like I've asked you this before when you've presented, but now I'm drawing a blank. If a student, if this is their first year here, they're not taking that exam this year, are they? Even if they've only been here a couple of months, they're already taking the exam?
Yes, there is a cutoff period. I believe it's 30 days before the end of the testing window. So if students enroll within those 30 days, they're not required to take it. Although the, the, we do get a lot of really good data and it's relatively quick. We have it before the end of the school year. And so if, if it makes sense to have the child participate, even if they enroll within the, the 30 day window where they're not required to, we, we try to do that if it's feasible.
Well, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you remind me, when did we start doing the PSYOP specific training and support with PD? Was it three years ago?
I believe it was 2022.
2022, so.
As a district-wide initiative.
Okay. So in that three-year window, we've seen some jumps. I mean, can't say it's cause and effect, but there's a correlation between the professional development, the intentional effort and the growth in data.
Yep.
Member Eames?
Just curious, how many students do we have all told? Cause 2,000 is a major percentage of our student body.
Yeah, we're, we're over 6,000. So yeah, multilingual students represent a third of our students.
Thirty percent, yeah.
It's a third of our students district-wide and at least two schools over 50%.
Yep. Thank you. Member Glenn?
Just one more question. So I'm looking at the percent of proficiency in Lewiston and the percent of demonstrating in Maine. And we're behind that. Are we the second largest ESL school or is Portland ahead of us as far as?
So I, I believe numbers wise, Portland has more multilingual learners enrolled, but percentage wise, we have a higher percentage. Although that changes all the time. So I'd need to double check to confirm.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Isaac.
Agenda item number 10 is to receive a presentation on the code of conduct efforts.
And we have Steve Maroon joining us to share some information. Sue is backup. I'm not going to steal too much of his thunder, but just want you to know that this is a very intentional plan coordinated around how we are intervening with student behaviors and, and being very thoughtful. And Steve is coming to us from the, the data analysis area. So I'll let you take it away. I won't steal too much.
Good evening again. My name's Steve Maroon. I'm the continuous school improvement coordinator for, for the district. And I'm also facilitating the code of conduct work for the discipline committee. And so tonight, if you don't mind going to the next, so tonight I just want to give you a little bit of background information behind the work of the discipline committee and the code of conduct and our district's need for a comprehensive behavior plan. And talk a little bit about why we decided to work on the student code of conduct first. And then what our core, our core main deliverables were from our discipline committee work. And then talk about the strategic handoff to the SEL implementation team, which is another committee that's facilitated by Sue Williams. And then just kind of talk to you about our proposed or draft implementation timeline right now. And so as far as why the discipline committee came together and the code of conduct work, if you don't mind going to the next one. Every year, the district and all of our schools are required to do a comprehensive needs assessment. And we look at multiple sources of data. And I believe it was the, the 2021 school year when we were looking at discipline data. Specifically, there were a lot of key findings. It appeared that some, it appeared that there was a lack of common understanding of behavior expectations. There were inconsistencies with how our schools are reporting incidents and documenting incidents. The discipline actions in all of our schools were varied. There were some discrepancies between student subgroups. So we had certain subgroups, our Black and African-American students showed higher incidents compared to their population than others. There's a lack of clarity and responsibility. So as far as which behavior should the classroom teachers and other staff be managing versus administration? And we really did not have a comprehensive behavior plan. So that was kind of the key findings that led to the creation of the committee. We also do through Panorama, we do stakeholder perception surveys every year. And so our stakeholders are telling us the same thing that we discovered by looking at data. Our staff has told us that they really want consistency in handling behaviors. They want support in managing behaviors within the classroom. They want clearer consequences with more effective action steps from administration and they want accountability. And our students have told us that they want more support from teachers in dealing with bullying. They want assistance with building social skills. They want help with managing emotions and they want teachers and administrators to effectively address behavioral issues. And our families have been telling us the same thing. They want consistent discipline protocols. They want the district to focus on discipline and safety. They want training for teachers on classroom management and they want supervision and intervention to prevent bullying. So we're seeing this in our data as well as from our stakeholders. We looked at a lot of metrics when we were looking at behavior data. I'm just going to share a few that we, that we had looked at with you. This first chart just shows the number of incidents as of Friday at each of our schools. And we, when we were looking at this data, one of the questions that, you know, we asked is are incidents a district, a district-wide concern? And, and it appears that, that it is. The next chart shows the number of incidents by the location that the incident happened in. And as you can see, the largest location is within the classroom. So you're talking about 64% of all incidents are happening in the classroom, which, you know, makes us ask the staff have the tools and knowledge to effectively manage classroom behaviors. The next chart. This chart shows the number of students who have repeat incidents for this year. And again, all of this data is as of Friday. And so you can see, for example, the last, the last point, there are 65 current students who have more than 15 discipline referrals so far this year. So again, we ask, are we adequately, adequately addressing the root causes of behavior problems? And then I put this one in here too, and, and you may or may not be aware, but we have quite a bit of mobility in our district. So this chart really shows the number of students and the number of school changes that they've had over the years. So the green are students who have had at least one school change and the yellow students who have had two school changes. Now those are school changes primarily between our elementary school, one elementary school to another elementary school. It does not include sixth grade transitions to middle school or our eighth grade transition to high school. So you can see, you know, we've got quite a high, high mobility in our district. You know, and, and thinking about that, are, are we really supporting, you know, students with their transitions? You know, they, they definitely need stable and predictable environments. They need consistent expectations across all schools to help them adapt quickly. They need support systems and consistent approaches to managing behavior, which will help hopefully mitigate the impact of frequent school changes. And again, with a district-wide effort, it ensures equitable treatment and support for all students regardless of when they move from school to school. You know, and research shows that transitions can lead to academic decline, increased behavioral issues and heightened anxiety. And I had just put down, just to, just to remind everybody that, you know, that does not include all of the sixth graders who do move to middle school. That's a quite a large transition as well as eighth grade to high school. And so that really kind of leads us to our district's need for a comprehensive behavior plan. And so when I think of a comprehensive behavior plan, I'm thinking of it in really two pillars. And so you have the student code of conduct work, which the discipline committee is doing, the one that I'm facilitating. And really the purpose of that code of conduct is to clearly outline the expectations as well as the consequences. And to really help all of our stakeholders understand the school's standards and expectations. It provides a basis for the disciplinary actions when expectations are violated, promotes accountability and responsibility among students. It supports the creation of a consistent and orderly school district-wide. And one thing that's really needed is, is the last bullet, clearly distinguishing what behavior should be managed in the classroom and what should be referred to the office. The second pillar is the work that is being done by the SEL implementation team that Sue was facilitating. And ultimately it's really, its purpose is to start preparing the skill, the professional development for the skills and tools that our classroom teachers and other staff are really going to need in order for us to effectively implement the code of conduct work. I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
Just briefly, one of the things we talk about when we talk about classroom managed versus office managed behaviors, we, you know, I always refer to as a, as a Venn diagram. You know, you've got classroom in one end, you've got office here, there's always going to be some middle of that Venn diagram where, you know, it's a classroom that may tip into it. Right now it's kind of skewed where office managed behaviors are creeping very much into that circle. That's classroom managed behaviors because we need to build some capacity in the toolkits of our educators to address those issues within the classroom. So the SEL implementation team has really worked hard to sort of build a comprehensive plan that pulls in practices from a number of trauma-informed approaches, restorative practices, therapeutic crisis intervention, which is also known as TCI, responsive classroom, regulated classroom, and our ruler approach that we use on our emotions matters, emotions matter curriculum from Yale. And sort of pulling the pieces, the strategies and the tools and the important aspects of those approaches that we would love for teachers to have and build capacity in so that they're better able to sort of get that tier one net, tier one meaning within the classroom, get that net really tight so that fewer students are falling, falling from the net to an office managed behavior or into a real serious behavior. And we can put more of our resources toward fewer students because we're better able to manage those pieces just within the classroom community. So that's the goal. When we started with this work, there was like, well, they started having these conversations at the code of conduct or the discipline committee. And it was like, well, what, what is the role of each of these groups? And we really established the SEL team as really looking at that tier one piece and developing that strategy. Because a code of conduct is, is going to fall apart if we're not addressing that piece first. What's the point of having a code of conduct that talks about how you, you, you address discipline issues in a consistent way when we're inconsistent and unable to manage those right at the tier one level? So you can see some of the pieces here. I won't read all the bullets to you, but it's really just about equipping our staff in a very intentional way with practices that are trauma-informed, but also bring some tools for classrooms to help manage behavior by building proactive social emotional learning and emotional regulation skills, among others.
So that kind of leads into why we started with the, the code of conduct first, because we, we definitely need to define the expectations first. And there's a few bullets, you know, kind of highlighting the code of conduct work, but we definitely need to get the expectations defined first. And then we can build capacity after. So the next one, Jake, please. And so the discipline committee's focus was really to develop those student code of conduct guides. So we developed three distinct guides. They really have a, a shared foundation of expectations. And we've kind of tried to tailor that for each of our stakeholder groups, but we, our charge was to develop a guide for our administrators, our staff, as well as our family and students. And so the next slide, I just wanted to give you kind of a peek as far as what you would find in our code of conduct guidelines. So again, there's really three, three broad areas. There's foundational information, behavior, expectations and roles and response and support systems. And so you can kind of see those pieces that will be in, in each of those stakeholder guides. I'll give you a moment to take a look at those. And so the next one, Jake, please. And so we just kind of covered it, but now we're, we're in a place where we're doing the strategic handoff to the SEL implementation team. So we have our student code of conduct guides that are, are finished. And we've, we have started focusing on, and we're going to continue to focus on building that capacity for our staff to be able to manage those behaviors that we're asking them to manage in the classroom. And also to make sure that we are implementing code of conduct and SEL implementation work with fidelity district-wide to get that consistent. and SEL implementation work with fidelity district-wide to get that consistency. And so the last thing I just wanted to share with you, and hopefully you're, you're going to be able to see this okay, is our, our proposed timeline. And so you'll see the timeline in the middle. The top of the timeline is the work of the SEL implementation team. The bottom is the code of conduct work. So we established our committee as soon as we finished our comprehensive needs assessment. And so we've spent about sixty hours developing, doing research and developing all three of those guides. We wanted to take time during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to really provide several training sessions for our building leaders, specifically to get their feedback on that. So that's what we did this year while the SEL implementation team had, has already identified the SEL practices, developed the roadmap. And they've already planned professional development, some of it of which was carried out this year. Next year, during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the discipline committee is going to continue our code of conduct work. We're going to work on a very thoughtful implementation plan for all three of our stakeholder groups. And we're also going to continue administrator training quarterly. While the SEL implementation team carries out staff professional development to get us ready to implement. And they're going to continue doing some planning of professional development. The following year, they're going to carry on that same work as far as providing professional development for staff while continuing to plan. And we're going to start a strategic introduction of the code of conduct for our staff with the goal of a full implementation during the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. So that timeline may shift. We might be able, we might be ahead. It depends. There are some schools that are a little bit further ahead than others that may begin to start implementing that earlier. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions, but I want to be here all night with this. So I think one thing just to start. Could you maybe give an example or somehow paint the picture of like, what will be different in terms of, are there different behaviors that will be allowed or not allowed? Or is this more about just who is responding and when and how? Is that the only?
It's, it's, it's really just looking at, at the current behaviors and kind of tearing them out from the, the least severe to the most severe. And really thinking about which behaviors should our classroom teachers be able to manage in the classroom without having to contact administrators to deal with the behavior. So that's, that's different. You know, and then there's a menu option as far as disciplinary responses, you know, trying to get to be more restorative in nature. So there are a few pieces that are, are quite different, but ideally, it really kind of sets the tone for how we want administrators to respond. You know, to discipline calls and, you know, staff are wanting to have also have that information. They want that transparency of, you know, what am I supposed to manage? Where are you supposed to manage? When do I call the office? When don't I call the office? What happens when I call the office? So they're, they're looking for those pieces.
Can I just add to that a little bit too? There's a big part of this effort is around consistency in classroom to classroom, school to school. So when we talk about students know what to expect. This is probably a terrible example, but in my house, when my kids act up, they know what I'm going to do. They have, they can predict it. They probably make fun of me and laugh about it. I know they're at that age, but they know because of routines and pretty consistent approaches that they know what's going to happen. We have kids that are between mobility or grade to grade or day to day. I do this same thing in, at five different occasions and five different places throughout my schooling career. Let's call it a fairly minor infraction. There was no predictor as to what was going to come of that. Whether you'd get written off, whether you wouldn't, whether you'd see somebody in the office or you wouldn't, someone would call home or you wouldn't. So really trying to clean up all of that to make sure our systems are running consistently. And that consequences aligned to common language processing deliberately and intentionally. So make sure that this is a teachable moment, not just a transaction. So there's, there's more layers to it around consistency and, and what we hope the kid experience and the adult experience will be. What this isn't is naive that because we have a book and a flow chart, that the behaviors are just going to improve. So this isn't about, about that necessarily. This is more about having consistent approaches so that these are teachable moments for kids and that the practices are consistent to actually create teachable moments so that bullying could decrease. So that kids know what's happened, so that teachers can feel like I was supported when this happened because I know what's going to happen next. Instead of feeling like some teachers thinking, you know, kids never get in trouble while we're getting phone calls from parents saying the consequences are too severe. So having that consistency amongst students, staff and families would really help, we're hoping broaden the conversation even to our community of how do we support our kids and be really consistent?
Yeah, I, I think that's great. In fact, I think it's so great. The one thing that does worry me about what you shared is that it might be three years until it's fully implemented. And so you don't necessarily have to fully respond to this now, but maybe something to think about would be how much, I guess there's always a balance with the planning process between comprehensiveness and speed and results to address an immediate problem, right? And I, I think a lot of us, we've talked a lot about this. We've had a lot of disciplinary hearings. I think we feel some urgency around this type of thing. So I mean, what I might just put out there is, is there a way to think about how, how this can start now? I mean, I know there's already efforts around that and it's not waiting until it's all done. And then, and then you roll it out to everybody and then, you know, how, how can you be getting everyone up to speed? You know, over the next three months with a line out to three years, but not, not waiting is my one concern.
I can jump in, Sue, but I just also look at me, but the pace of this change is intentional in that, one, yes, it's already begun. And we've talked about things like non-negotiables that administrators are already functioning with differently than they were just a few months back. But what we got for feedback from teachers and for administrators was if we don't do this right, it's going to create more inconsistency. And so the pacing model is actually built around staff feedback. And just what available time we have for professional development. And so it's, it's got its limitations, but I don't know if you want to chime in as well.
Yeah, I think one of the benefits we have to remember about classroom managed behaviors is that the the student is remaining in the classroom and maintaining that relationship with the teacher who's trying to make them accessible to learning. The more they're out of the classroom, the more an administrator who's actually their big charge is to manage the instructional environment of the building, the more of that time is sort of being taken up with those pieces. The less time teachers have to sort of establish and reestablish relationships with students. So we're while there may be consequences that are clear and approaches that are clear, we can't consequence ourselves quickly out of the behavior issues that we're having right now. We really need that strong tier one basis so that we have a real proactive approach to how are we helping students learn the expectations? How are we helping students learn the rules? So that when they, you know, fall out of step with those expectations, they know what to expect and our approaches to that discipline is appropriate to the offense. So lots of these layers. It's really hard to come in and, and, and hold every teacher accountable to a standard that they don't have the toolbox to meet. So that's not healthy for teachers or for students either. So it does take time, but you know, as Steve said and Jake said, there's things that are happening behind the scene. Just the way incidents are being reported is already changing at buildings to help build that consistency. Consistency. Some buildings are implementing some of these pieces around office and classroom managed behaviors and tearing them out in their buildings. So it's really thinking about where the building is developmentally, what's the, what's the key implementation piece for them right at this point? And to help, to make sure that it's a success. And building that common language also takes time. When we have turnover and we have new staff, we're starting from scratch with those staff every year, but hopefully we'll be building a system that a new staff member can step into and have the language and the supports and all those pieces. And it just takes time. It's not pushing pause on this. It's just slowing some of those pieces so that our staff feels confident in their ability to address students, build community, address student behaviors. And in general, you know, help the system function the way it's supposed to.
Member heard?
Thank you. So I think I'm really happy to see accountability and equity on there. I think those are really huge bullet points. If you're looking to make change and create this and roll this out in our district. I am also concerned about the three-year, how long it is going to take because we know there are some really big behaviors right now in our district. And so Jake and I have actually had this conversation earlier today. And I'm sorry, I might get emotional about this, but my family has decided that we are choosing a different district for our children in the fall. And part of that is we're looking for a more faith-based education for our kids, but a big part of it is behaviors in the district. My children, I have a third grader and a first grader have been attacked on multiple occasions. And I'm not saying that the staff and the admin at our district are mishandling things because they think they are. But I think the things that our kids are seeing and the things that our kids are being exposed to are huge and you know, I hear a lot from our teachers and staff in our district, you know, and the word keeps coming up, we're glorified babysitters. So like, because there are so many behaviors and so many things that are going on in our classrooms that our staff are having to manage on a day-to-day. You know, how much learning is actually being done while our students are in the classroom and you know, I, my friends have kiddos and, you know, the other day it was kind of like a student had an issue in a classroom and that whole classroom was picked up and bounced around from outside picnic tables to a coach's classroom to a, this person's classroom to this current person's classroom for, you know, over an extended period of time. And so how are we? I'm hoping this code of conduct will help to address some of those things because I think these are really big things that are happening in our district and you know, I'm not the only family that is choosing to move their students elsewhere, you know, starting in the fall. And I think you know, I'm not trying to toot my own horn here, but I'm saying these are families who are engaged in our districts. They're going in and they're volunteering in classrooms. They're helping out during parties. They're a, they're a classroom parent, they're a classroom helper, they're running the PTO programs, they're doing all these things for our districts. And then when they leave, who is going to replace them? Who's going to take their place? Who's going to be there to help support our staff and the teachers and the students and all of those things? And so it's just such a trickle-down effect that it's not just one thing, but it affects like such a bigger picture and I don't know what the answer is. I hope this will help in combating some of these big things that we're facing in our district. And, you know, I sent Jake a text the other day. I said, oh, yes, has some really, really huge bright spots in our districts. Like our kids are doing amazing, huge things. They're contributing to our community. They're contributing, you know, across the country. But I think there's also this really big elephant that we're trying to combat. And I think the behavior part is that, is that elephant. That's that big thing that we're trying to to fix or change or, I don't know, but I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that this will be a, a big change and a turning point, you know, and we'll give our staff and our admins and, you know, it'll be a good, because I think if we take, if we approach this and tackle this at a younger age in our elementary schools, we won't be seeing those bigger behaviors, you know, middle school, high school. They already know what to expect because they've been held accountable at a younger age. And so they know that they're not going to get away with it as they get, you know, up there. So I think this is great. I hope it works and I'm hoping we can implement it maybe a little sooner.
I just want to clarify, I know Steve used the word planning. He talked about a multi-year approach. There are things happening currently. So it's not waiting, it's not planning for three years then, it's continuing to plan while we're implementing pieces with a, a three-year target of completion. It does take a while to shift this appropriately and get people to, to shift their practices. But Sue, do you have a rough idea? I know we looked at the calendar earlier today. How many sessions are at least drafted right now for portions of a professional development piece next year? Was it like a dozen different?
Well, the, the phases are drafted and what's going to happen, sort of a, a three-phased approach based on where your building is to implementing some of these pieces. There's probably in our phase one, there's probably five or six of the sort of professional development, for lack of a better word, modules that are sort of drafted and ready. And the next step is to sort of think about, you know, are there some some missing pieces? If we're talking about one aspect of the ruler approach, is there some responsive classroom pieces in there? Are there some more expectation building strategies that we need with teachers? So it's well on its way. And we'll be ready to roll next year with the idea that there'll be resources available and principals will take a look and sort of with an implementation guide, think about where is my building and where do I need to start? And they'll have the ability to put more emphasis on one piece or another as they're going through based on their building needs and, and get a starting place based on their building needs because they're in, they're in different places of implementing even some of these SEL approaches and programs that we've been using. So trying to give everybody, get everybody off on the right foot, but also differentiate. So we'll have those modules ready for buildings to plan hopefully this summer when we work with our admin. They'll have that time to sort of plan out what their year is going to look like in supporting their staff.
Member Glenn, did you still have questions?
I, I like the idea of consistency and consequences in the classroom. I, I think that's going to be very helpful to be to have that those bright lines, so to speak. However, what I'm hearing is that the teachers are going to take on a parenting role. And that's disturbing. When I say parenting, the, the mentoring, the, the modeling of consistency, the modeling of consequences, the modeling of just about everything a child needs in a parent. And it's such a sad state of affairs in our culture today that the school has to take on this role. I am saddened by it. I'm, you know, I know it's there, but to have someone come up and present a role that a parent is supposed to be having with their children is very disconcerting. And that's our culture. It's not being done in the home. The parents are not effective or ineffective or don't know how to be effective. And so the teachers have to learn how to be consistent and model and show children what they should be learning at home. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Herman?
Thank you. Excuse me. First off, thank you for this presentation. And I think this work is, is really important to do and to especially get that consistency. I guess I have sort of a two-part question and I apologize if I missed it when I stepped out of the room, but it seemed like there were sort of three different audiences there. Teachers, I think admin and parents. And will the, will the guide for the parents set some clear expectations as far as behavior? And, and then part two, does this tie into what Superintendent Langless has mentioned before as sort of non-negotiables? Like when you're coming to school, you need to have at least these, these minimum standards of, of behavior in order to, like, to be effective at school.
And, and yes, the, the family guide will include those, those same expectations in there. And, and we are planning, well, next year we'll be planning on how we are going to implement that with family and students. So we'll be working, working through that plan and, and as far as the non-negotiables, I'd say yes as well.
Member heard?
Thank you. I feel like some of this also goes hand in hand with truancy. Like, are you guys also working with Natasha and her team? Because I feel like if kids aren't here all the time and, you know, like those types of things. And I know truancy in our district, unfortunately, it's, it's a big thing. And at a state level, they don't think it's a big thing. We could get a little, we could get a lot more support, I feel like, from the state on that. But I'm just thinking, I feel like those two things kind of go hand in hand.
Where the discipline committee's not Uh, where, um, the discipline committee is not, not currently working. Um, with, with Natasha, but um, as far as our district's comprehensive needs assessment goes, where. Actually, that, that's one of our district's primary focus is chronic absenteeism. And so we're in the process of developing our strategic plan to. Hopefully combat that. Um, but yeah, I, I agree. There's so many things related, perception surveys, academics.
I just wanted to add, uh, one of the things we can, we can do is we can share um. Some draft versions of the, the, the. Documents that, that we have for each audience, as, as you mentioned, um, Councilor Harriman. Uh, I would say, just to reiterate, with administration, it was their. Their wish, their, they asked for us to spend, I don't know why that's echoing, sorry, for us to spend um. This entire year, this entire school year, using their professional development time to go, to go through the administrator guide. Really look at scenarios, really think about how you address those. Um, and, and all do it actually in this room together as an entire fifty-member team. Um, and we spent. All but one of our, our administrative team meetings going over that and. The administrators who are, who are on the committee actually did the professional development for their peers. So they became sort of the expert in their section and they actually presented the, the professional development. That code of conduct for, for administrators is really not anything new, other than it's really bringing everything together. All of the policies that we've all updated around behavior, around expulsion, around suspension. Um, it's putting those policies in one, in one place, but it's also linking those things and the laws and. Sort of the strategies that we may use into this sort of flow chart and an easier document to go through. And, and find those, those things. So the behaviors are tiered out, as Steve said. So that, that guide, I would say, the administrator guide is probably the one that is the most. Well-known by all of us and has, it, it really is being, being used by administrators. It helps with those incidents. It helps with. Um, with sort of figuring out what that consequence is or what the response to that behavior, that behavior is. I, I do want to, I do want to just say, um, we're not, we're not thinking that the code of conduct is going to eliminate. The behaviors. We're thinking that the code of conduct is going to help us in addressing those behaviors. Making sure that students and teachers and administrators know what those expectations are, what those policies are. What the procedures are within, within the district. So the administrative guide, I would say, is. Well, on its way to being used this year. I know at the, the high school and at. The middle school and most of the elementary schools, if not all of them, they are referring to that. They have dug into that. We spent time last summer and we've spent all this year. The, the teacher and the family or the staff and the family and student guide are the two. That we're going to need to do some more work and, and to the points of many of you, we're going to need to spend time. Helping teachers and staff understand this is what we can and can't do when a, when a, when a behavior happens. Um, this is how many days a student can be suspended. This is how many days they can't be suspended. Same with parents. Um, so I just wanted, you said a lot of that, Steve. I just wanted to reiterate that and. The, I give kudos to the administration for saying, we need to understand. What this is and how this works so that, because we have said to them, you're responsible for teaching. Your staff and your families. We're going to help you, but it's your buildings. It's your responsibility to make sure you can speak to that. So that's why we spent so much time with administrators and I would say that. And we'll get, we'll allow, we'll send you some, we'll send you the links to those documents to look at those.
Member Ames.
That was actually going to be my question. I was hoping we could get a hold of some of this. I would have loved to have seen this before the meeting, so that's just one thing, one of my pet peeves is that we never. Yeah, but we. Thank you. Um, also, of course, the, 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 I understand how hard it is to shift culture. It's very hard. It's going to take years, but I'm so glad to hear that it started and. Um, it's really kind of the first I've heard that it started, so I, I'm kind of surprised. It's the first time I heard this. But I'm really happy that I'm hearing this.
I was just curious if you could share a little bit more, if there are plans for how this will be. Sort of disseminated to the parents, other than just the guide. I think that um, the families that are already engaged and are already sending their kids to school, sort of school-ready. Um, it, it will be an easy transition, but for the families that aren't as engaged or the students that aren't as prepared for. The expectations in a school environment, how do we plan on getting the parents sort of on board with this?
Um, great question. I agree. Um, that's what our committee is going to start working on, um, right away in September is, is how we plan on implementing to. Because we've already implemented for the most part to our administrators. So for our staff, our students and our family.
But I, I want to emphasize, as soon as you start this work, it creates a shift. And so when a school administrator uses a specific consequence or a teacher is communicating a specific behavior in a classroom to a family. They're already going to start using consistent. Intentional language and steps. And so the, the family adjustment piece or the, not adjustment, the. Maybe it is an adjustment for some families, but the, the family communications piece around expectations will be ongoing. So it'll be part of. Orientation at the start of the year, this coming year. It'll be part of, you know, evenings that they have. It'll, it'll be part of all those pieces. So. When they say planning, they're not just sitting and waiting. It's how do we further integrate this message to as many people as possible with the next set of intentional steps? Um, so we're actually, again, already seeing some shifting in this. Um, but I, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself because it's, as it gets warmer, we sometimes see additional behaviors. As a reminder, we've, we're just over a month of school left and it, and it absolutely flies at this point. So. Some of this work will have to continue in the fall.
And just one more question. Um. Do you have example, we've heard from teachers, staff, that like there's. Problems in the classroom and they're handling things that they shouldn't be handling. It's pulling them away from education time. Um, have any of those pieces? Been clarified yet? Like this is something that staff were expected to address in the classroom before, but now that's shifting to administrators or has any of that been determined yet? And could you give some examples if it has?
Um, in the, um, and then at, in the administrator guide as well as the staff guide, it, it. We clear, clearly have defined what. Types of behavior, what types of incident behavior that we are um, expecting teachers. To manage and, and those that should be referred right away to administrators. I don't have any examples off the top of my head. There's, there's quite a few, but. Um, I, I will share the guide and it's, it's all clear in, in both of those guides.
This is such a spider web though. I just want to be clear that when you have. Responsive classroom strategies in place that are trauma-informed and you're using our SEL tools. And following the curriculum as intended, you will see less behaviors. So all of this comes together. Well, we can't use all the PD time for this. We have to just use some. Um, but a, a classroom, um, I think of, uh. We've all been in school. How did kids behave when you had most subs? Because everybody knew that there was a couple of subs, like you didn't mess around with that sub. But like when there was a sub, you're like, ah, we're probably not doing a lot today as a student and I get away with things because my teacher's not here. But a lot of that is because that person doesn't know the routines. It has a different language. It has a different feel. It has all those different components. And when. Teachers can be more consistent, have stronger routines, follow the, the curriculum and deliver the good learning opportunities more consistently. We see great things happen and we have, I want to be clear that we have lots of teachers already doing that. But we also have lots of teachers who complain about things, who don't use our curriculum. Who complain about things but don't have things in place, even though they have supports like. Ruler and other metrics, especially at the elementary school where it's had some time to get some legs under it. So we just need, uh, to make sure that we're intentional and deliberate to bring everybody there and have supports. And we have heard from, um, from teachers that. They really like these strategies and they're starting to use them in pieces, but they need time and support to fully integrate them more and more. Um, so I think the, the pacing piece is, is really important. But it's not just, the kids showed up and they're bad. I mean, some kids are struggling to follow the routine. Some kids take longer than others to adapt to a school routine. But we as adults have to set consistent routine and, and embrace it and support it and all be on the same page. I can't be in the hallway of my classroom and have them lined up and behaving and have the next class just be all over the map. It, the consistency piece has to be there and that's what we're trying to do with common language, common routines, common actions. So. It is taking some time, but again, I do think we're moving in the right direction.
Member Boden.
Thank you. Um, so there's been a lot said tonight, um, by various committee members that I. They're taking the words right out of my mouth, so I'm not going to um, say them all over again. Um, but I, I do want to make it clear that I was. Happy to see this on the agenda. But also surprised that I didn't have any materials to look at around this beforehand. Um, even if it was just the presentation that we got. Um, that was our first time seeing it as well. And so, um, I have so many thoughts. But I'm not, I'm not even ready to have a conversation about it yet because I want to look into it a little bit further. And I, I guess my question that I want answered is who is on this behavior committee and how is this form, like who, who chose this and who is it made up of? Is this just administrators?
Um, so there are, um, there are. There's the high school principal who's on it, the middle school principal. We have, um. I believe one. Um, elementary principal. There are some SEL. Coaches that are on there. Um, I'm on there. Um, the assistant superintendent is on there. Um, and we had, um, our LEA president who was on there. Uh, our next step director was on there. Think that was.
So do we have any behavioral specialists on?
Uh, yeah, we had, um, what was her name? The one from, that was at the middle school? Uh, Kelly.
Kelly Dempsey. And Cassidy, who's a behavioral specialist.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, I would, I would just really like to see some more material on this and um. The direction that it's going because. You know, I, I don't want to. I don't want to echo too much.
Karen's already shared it to you. Uh, I'll have to apologize. Uh, Steve had the presentation ready. Um, as you know, I had some interruptions late last week. Otherwise this would have been in your packet.
Member Heard.
Thank you. Um, this actually is probably a Jake and Elizabeth question. I know we've kind of talked about. Restrictions at the state level of what we can do with our elementary students. So I didn't know if anything was in the pipeline at a state level or superintendent level. Um, because I feel like that also had, plays a little bit into that, this too.
Um, there are some bills waiting for dispensation up in Augusta about that. Um, I don't know. When? Is it next week or the week after? Anyway, it's coming. There are some bills about, um, suspending. Elementary school students. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's the only one that I'm aware of that might impact this particular conversation is that larger conversation around the limitation from fifth grade and down of only three days. Um, other things that do come into play that are slightly separate to this are conversations around. Restraints, seclusion and paperwork and the follow-up process to that. Um, because we do run into situations with kids, no matter what age they are. If you, if you do any kind of. Um, you know, this student has to be helped. So we talk about like a classroom being cleared. If you put your hands on a kid to take them out of a class because they're issuing disruptive. It, it turns on a lot of mechanisms, um, not just from documentation, but follow-up meetings, uh, and things of that nature. And the rules of chapter thirty-three are very specific. In what you can and cannot do. And grabbing onto a child to pull them out of a classroom because they're being disruptive is not allowable. And so that's why we have shifted strategies. So between arise and behaviors. Again, I would encourage better parenting across the board. And, and also increase in the number of laws that have protections in them. We have to abide by certain rules. We have to get better holistically, whole community. But also we need to be consistent with the new things in play that we never adapted to.
Member Ames.
Yeah, both Karen and I watched that whole. Thing play out about restraints and how the committee was dealing with that proposal to loosen up the. The, um, being forbidden to touch a student, et cetera. And it seemed like the committee was pretty sympathetic to that shift. I don't know what the larger legislature will vote on, but the committee seemed like. Most of them have been teachers. They understood.
Yeah, the, the ed committee has seemed to have, be favorable to the pushes we have made from the Lewiston lens, yeah.
So what, what do you need from us? And that might be a question more for Jake and more for the, for future meetings, but I think. You know, what, whatever you need to make this successful and speedy, I think. We could probably get behind it if it's within reason. So I think something we can come back to in future meetings, but wanted to put that out there.
I think number one, resources. We have to please go vote on May thirteenth. I can't tell you how to vote, but. Anything that elongates or shrinks our budget is going to be even more challenging. You can't ask us to continue to try to do more and better with less resources. So we're, we're asking for. People to get out and vote. Um, that's a week from tomorrow. Um, but really the resources piece, so over time we've cobbled together grants and a little bit of general fund and a, a little bit of. Grant to try to get to a place where we can have supports in schools. Um, and so at this point, we. Finally are at a place where there are supports at every elementary school. And so those are spaces where we think we'll see pretty rapid. Um, shifts because they actually have people in place to help support the work. Um, and so I think resources is the first thing I would ask for. The other thing I'll say, um, and, and I took feedback from someone else, um, outside of this room here recently. There's a lot of good things happening, but I don't know that we, we've not used this platform to say, hey, do you realize we're doing this? Um, so this stuff is not just new in the works. This wasn't just new in the last few months. We've been working on the discipline piece since Steve. Pulled together the data with the new analytics piece. Two years ago that we, that we really started going, three years ago. Where we started saying, okay, how do we do this systemically? Because moving Lewiston public schools is like turning the Titanic. We're massive and we need consistency and it can't just be a one-shot deal. It won't stick. Um, so we're, we're really trying to be intentional with changing some of these pieces and, and the work we're doing with curriculum. Like I know there's a curriculum subcommittee, but I don't think people actually realize the work we're doing in curriculum that is very intentional. And very well-designed and being rolled out at a pace that people can digest it and be supportive with it. Um, so part of what we're seeing in these new subcommittees we have is the need to bring these kinds of things more in front of you that, that's actually happening. Day-to-day in our spaces. But Sue, do you want to add to?
I'm wondering if, um, once we get going into next year, a workshop where the, the connections are really clear on the proactive work we're doing with teachers. To that code of conduct and how, so maybe. Um, sharing some of that work and how it's rolling out with teachers or, um, even some of the activities that we've done with administrators and teachers for you to sort of experience to sort of. You know, understand how all of these sort of cogs work together, um, in service to, to the larger picture of student support.
Any other questions or comments? Member Heard.
I just want to say thank you. So I didn't actually knew, know who you were before this evening. I texted him, I'm like, who's Steve? I'm like, who is this man on our agenda? Um, but I just wanted to say, say thank you, um, because I think, think this is something that. Not everybody wants to talk about and it's not necessarily a fun ta- topic to talk about, but I think it's definitely needed. And so just thank you for doing this for our district and like. Jumping off the deep end and just taking it on because I think, um, I really do think that we will see great things coming from this. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eleven is to receive and potentially vote on an update on paid family medical leave.
So that I put a memo in the packet, but um, essentially for the paid family medical leave pool that has to be created, you can also have a private option. If you move to a private option, you need to shop the plans, which rate is the best? Also, what services does that plan provide? Um, so we're actually in the process of doing that now. But if you go to a private plan, you can stop making your quarterly contributions. Because you've made a commitment. To make that commitment, you have to do so in writing. There's a few forms and it has to be done here pretty soon. And with the timing of our next meeting and the fact that we are still getting quotes on different plans. Um, what we're hopeful you will agree to is to direct me to facilitate a process where we choose the plan that makes the most sense for Lewiston public schools and our employees. And in doing so, we would save money on our current contribution schedule because we wouldn't have to start this till next year. We believe there's some service benefits as well. Uh, it'll also save our, our own folks who are getting deducted, uh, in the short term. And so we, we're, we're looking at doing this. We think it's the best thing for our district. Uh, but. Something of, of this size, wanted to put it in front of you to make sure you were aware that we're looking at something that could save us, uh, over two hundred thousand dollars, but. Has, has a privatized approach to the paid fam- family medical leave. has has a privatized approach to the paid family medical leave responsibilities.
Member Eames.
Yeah, I was up in Augusta for this too, and they have to approve the the plan. They have to approve, someone in Augusta has to approve that in fact it is comparable.
That's that's accurate. We have to submit forms to.
And they said it would take two days. The turnover is two days. And there must be a deadline.
And there's a deadline is coming up. I think it's June. Don't quote me. At the end of this quarter, Adam may know he's coming up. But also want to note that any contribution we make to the state, we can't recoup. So we want to.
There were some proposals that we would.
Well legislatively, but not in law currently.
Right, but I mean, they're working on it.
So we have the deadline to opt into a private plan. And save the quarter, the current quarter that we're in of April through June is May thirty-first. And so we've been advised it would be best to have whatever we want to submit in by May twenty-first. To give some buffer, make sure the state has time to say, yes, you're okay. And so obviously that's a that's the goal is to save the contributions for the current quarter. That's three months worth of contributions from the district and from our employees that can be avoided.
But the goal is to get the paid family leave to our staff.
So ironically, we already do.
But a comparable, I mean.
Yes, yep.
Member Bowden.
Thank you. So what does this mean for the budget that we're about to vote on? Where you're saying there's potentially two hundred thousand dollars worth of savings here if we went private? Is that something that we've budgeted for for the next cycle or is this? I don't know. Can you just kind of explain this as far as our budget goes and where it gets in?
Yep. So and Adam, feel free to chime in. We'll have some initial savings, but then we also have to roll on this plan, which will have cost. So there's this some back and forth. The savings would be, at least from my opinion, in the short term, will be in the current budget and money that we don't have to send to Augusta for the the June quarter. Adam, do you want to add to that as far as the savings perspective?
Yeah, quite a bit of the savings will be in the current year we're in now. And then some of it will be in next year. But the way things stand now, if we go with the private plan, we'll have to start contributing in May of twenty twenty-six. So there's will still be some cost next year. Even if we go with this.
So these may be really stupid questions because I do not understand this paid family medical leave thing at all. But so I know like it's been coming out of my paycheck since the start of the year. I'm assuming that's been happening to all of our staff here in the district. And so if this gets switched to the private, will those deductions stop for all of our staff?
So the answer is, well, let me back up.
Yeah, because I don't understand.
Because this is not, this is very complicated, extremely complicated. So the our staff only start paying in based on when their collective bargaining agreements took effect. And so right as of January first, all of our non-unionized staff as well as our teachers started paying in. So right now, those are the staff paying in. And then others will come on in July, others would come on September, et cetera, based on when their new bargaining agreements start. If we go with a private plan, all the contributions will immediately stop. And then everyone would start paying in in May of twenty twenty-six.
And so doesn't that sort of leave a gap?
So the good news is that the gap would be, the reason we're paying now is to build up the state's fund. But where we're going with a private fund and and these insurance providers are already doing this in other states. They don't need us to pre-fund the plan. And so that's why it can wait until next spring, when the when the benefits actually start.
So once the benefits start, if this, if it goes private, somebody drawing these benefits would be drawing from a private like insurance agency as opposed to drawing from the state pool.
That's correct, but the benefits would be comparable. They would be the same.
Okay, all right. I think I understand it a tiny bit better. Thank you.
And the comparable benefits is what member is was speaking to is that's what the state has to prove that this is actually comparable.
Counselor Harriman.
Yeah, that was my question. So this going with a private plan is, I forget the the exact language that they use, but like substantially similar or comparable. And it does have to be approved by the state, but it wouldn't be connected with the state's pool.
That's correct, yeah.
And so if our staff aren't paying into that private pool between now and May of twenty-six, what funds their benefits?
So that's part of the benefit of going to the private plan is the insurance company, whatever insurance company we end up with. They're already in this business, right? And they already have pools of money that handle these types of things. So they've looked at our our staffing numbers. They've looked at our census data and other district census data and determined what rate they would need to charge us and when it would need to start. And knowing it doesn't need to start till May first, that's how they've determined the rate that they're comfortable with. And everything we've looked at, we would be able to get a lower rate than the current one percent being used by the state.
Okay, any other questions?
Just the only thing I'd add is just because I know this has come up a couple of times before, just making sure going forward that we're not somehow doubling up the paid leave. As I I know there's layers to this and every time it comes up, but just as as this is sorted out and as the collective bargaining agreements kind of go through their cycles. I know you'll figure it out, but I just want to make sure that's not, you know, that's not an issue going forward.
We have been very intentional about that, and so we should be all set. Now we'll continue to be very intentional every time we negotiate. And the 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 thinking behind the the doubling is the the law has certain protections and you could draw the family medical leave as qualified under the federal and then look at state family medical leave. And so there's a, there's a real curiosity as to whether you can just straight double up. And so we are looking at having constraints around that where possible within the law. Because I don't think that was the intention because we're an organization that already provides family medical leave. And people can use their accruals, which in many cases is paid. But to to your point, yes, we are absolutely monitoring that closely. And the law could change. That's the other thing is there's still legislation that's in process around this, so.
Just to piggyback on what Jake just said about the law could change, right? There's many proposals to repeal it right now. If we do go with this, we're not locked into paying into something that no longer needs to exist. All of those requirements would would go away if the law was repealed. We we would not be bound to stay and pay into this private plan. We've addressed that question directly. So so we know we're not taking on a risk by doing that.
Any other questions or comments? Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we direct the superintendent to shop around for the best. It's what it, what I call a private option. Yeah, let's go with that.
I'll second that, whatever that was.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unopposed? Thank you. No. Are you approaching to speak? I didn't, wait, I didn't open up for public comment and I should have. Did you want to speak on that or? Okay, sorry. Agenda item number twelve is to review and potentially vote on the second read for the following policies listed on the agenda as A through F. Did you want to speak first or public comment first?
I'll just reiterate that the this is the second read of the policies that we looked at two meetings ago. And really, the again, the biggest changes with the harassment and discrimination policies is the is the combining of the sexual harassment and non-sexual harassment and really the biggest changes around the procedures in which we are required to use to investigate those those incidences. You'll notice that item number thirteen on the agenda is to delete two procedures. And the deletion of those procedures is because if you adopt the the revised policies in item number twelve, then we no longer need the two items under number thirteen. So just wanted to clarify that before we went into to vote or discussion.
Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. And and I guess just to clarify, the the overarching changes here are they're more of a, they seem to be more of a rearrangement of the same content rather than a a large scale change in the content. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. And again, the biggest change is within that procedure of how we go about investigating with some minor changes around a written complaint versus an oral complaint. The steps that the Title IX officer would need to 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 follow, but nothing nothing in terms of leaving any steps out or not investigating certain types of harassment. It's all still encompassed in the policy.
Member heard.
Thank you. Um, so I'm just gonna address the big elephant in the room here, and I had to ask Jake about this before at our meeting last week. But he said you weren't going to be here, so he didn't want you to miss all the fun. But in the, it's been in the news. The Sun Journal has posted some things, you know, talking about how we reverted back to the our twenty twenty version of Title IX, all of the things. So I just want to make sure that these policies cover that. They're taking place of that. They're in conjunction with that. Give us all the things.
Give you all the things. So it is true that it is the procedures that we followed prior to January of twenty twenty-four. So up until last January, we were following these same procedures and the policies. I I literally redlined what I had redlined less than a year ago, the after we had voted them in. So this, these policies don't have, the big elephant is about transgender athletes and all of those things. These these policies don't have anything to do with that. This is about discrimination and harassment and the way in which discrimination and harassment are covered under Title IX and how we proceed when those complaints are made.
Any other questions? Open out to the public.
Got it. Hi, my name's Darby Ray. I live at fifteen Beers Avenue in Lewiston. I work in Lewiston. I own a home in Lewiston and I'm the proud parent of two Lewiston Public School graduates. I want to thank you for your service and your time tonight and encourage you to support the proposed changes to the LPS Title IX policy. I've read all of the proposed changes and as I understand them, the amended policy offers helpful clarifications while maintaining vitally important protections for district staff and students. It also ensures that the policy continues to align with the main Human Rights Act and with Title IX, the landmark Federal Civil Rights Act law that was enacted in nineteen seventy-two. And as such, I ask you to vote in favor of the proposed amendments to the LPS Title IX policy. Thank you very much for your consideration and service.
Thank you. Any further discussion among the committee? Oh, sorry. I looked away too quick.
So I have some questions on twelve A, IJJ, the library one. How do you balance controversial items? Are we keeping in our libraries copies of Moncomp? Are we keeping Al Qaeda handbooks in our library? Those are both very controversial subjects. It says we're balancing, which means you should have copy things on both sides of the spectrum. Just a question that needs to be asked by the people, public. The other thing is, I'm glad to see that the school committee here in Lewiston recognizes the final authority on what a student is exposed to rests solely in the hands of their parents. The school is not going to be the parent of the kids. It is the parents who are the parent. It's a very important detail. It's something that people talk about all the time. You guys actually have it in writing. I wanted to thank you for that. Have a nice night.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Back to the committee.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the second read of the policies, A, or as listed, A through F.
Their second? Seconded by member? Osman, anyone? Member, yes. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It is unanimous. Just forgot that word for a second. Agenda item number thirteen is to review and potentially vote on the deletion of the following policies, A and B. Member heard.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the deletion of the following policies listed A and B.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? That is also unanimous. Agenda item number fourteen is report from the school committee chair. The only thing I have tonight is, I have to remember, sorry. This week is school educate, National Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you. And I just wanted to thank all of our educators in our district for the work that you do every day to keep our schools moving forward. Agenda item number fifteen is report from our superintendent.
So I had two things, Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to all of our educators, not just teachers in classrooms, but everybody from the bus driver to a custodian to front office staff, everybody. It takes us all. So thank you, thank you, thank you to them. Also wanted to share a little bit of information. I know that I I sent an email, but the EASE grant that was in support of mental health has been put on pause at the end of the fiscal year. And so as of December thirty-first, the funds that were for additional mental health supports, some school counselors and also efforts to get folks to consider changing into that profession or going to that profession, support for their classes and some professional development for staff, all those funds will stop December thirty-first. We're continuing to assess what possibilities might there be, and we've also some have said, don't count that yet. We'll see what happens. It could be a shift. From my lens, the only way I could see a shift would be a dedicated fund for it. It lands under discretionary funding, so it's it's not congressional specific. So these these injunctions that we've seen elsewhere, I don't think, at least from my review, it will apply to this particular funding model. So we're we're looking at how that might impact us. We do have three and a partially a fourth staff that are connected to those funds and some professional development and coursework being paid for. So we'll we'll have to look at what we can do for between now and December thirty-first. And if nothing changes, what can we do after December thirty-first? But there's a there's a likelihood that if we see other shortages, we may not be able to do anything.
Counselor Harriman.
And you said that was discretionary spending, so it's from the Federal Department of Education is where that was coming from?
Yeah, so tracking it back, it was a essentially a grant the state applied for from a discretionary level to support mental health efforts. And then when the state was awarded the grant, they they decided, we applied, many schools applied, they decided who was going to get what distribution. And so because of the steps in the funding source, it is considered discretionary.
Member Bowden.
Sorry, since we brought up Teacher Appreciation Week, can I just announce something? It is, it's appreciative. Well, I very much appreciate all of our teachers. It's also Nurses Appreciation Week. And my daughter is a community ambassador for Roma Joes. And I know that tomorrow, if you show your teacher badge or your nurse badge at a Roma Joe, she'll get a free twenty-four ounce drink. So just want to put that out there. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurses Week.
Okay, that was quick. Agenda item number sixteen is report from our city council rep.
All I have this week is today was the first official day for our new city administrator, Brian Kainrath. And then tomorrow is the city council meeting, starting at seven PM, where we'll be, we'll be covering the final public hearing for the budget. So hopefully everything goes smoothly tomorrow and then the next Tuesday, the thirteenth, will be the school budget referendum.
Thank you. Agenda item number seventeen, updates from school committee subcommittees. Have any met? Member Bowden.
Yeah, negotiations met this past week with our food service workers. And I think we just got another announcement that we have another contract opening up with food service managers. So we're still going strong with negotiations.
Thank you, member Eames.
Yeah, I just was at the Yeah, I just was at the LHI, sorry, Lewiston High School Science Curriculum Realignment Assessment Realignment work, and it's done for the year. And it was a lot of work they did. And it's just wonderful to see how much dedication the science teachers have put into this. It really is just a realignment of the standards. And I think the social studies, elementary social studies effort will end this week as well. Maybe it's next week. It's going to be the last one for that cycle as well. And so it's been a lot of work all year and it's been very successful. I don't know if Sue is still here. Thank you, Sue. Policy, you've been seeing all the policy things that we've been doing, so I don't need to mention those.
Multicultural.
So we had our multicultural subcommittee meeting today, our initial meeting with members of the committee and administrators. And it was great. It was a good start and we'll be meeting. We're looking for what we're going to be working on and who's going to be involved and what what we're going to be working on.
Member Glenn.
We did have a facilities meeting last week and part of that meeting was the tour of Main Street. It was a wonderful tour. It was very eye opening and I'm excited about that. And I would encourage anybody, when it comes up to have a tour, to take part of that. You'll you'll enjoy it. It's it's quite a building and looking forward to hearing more plans about it.
Anyone else, member.
Can I just add on to the the multicultural committee is looking for staff and students and parents and local leaders to be involved in that committee work. So either once in a coming to a few meetings or actually joining the committee. So I just wanted to put that out there, that a call to those of you on YouTube or on Zoom to think about if you or someone you know would like to be involved.
Thank you. Agenda item number 18, school committee community announcements. Member Bowden.
Thank you. Prom tickets went on sale this week at the high school. I believe they're $50 a ticket this week. If you wait until after Friday, they're $60 a ticket. So I think that's the only community announcement I have. Oh, and the theme is like Under the Stars or Tangled, movie Tangled. Looks cute.
Please go vote. So one week from tomorrow and I'm I'll send out some messaging to remind people. I do think, though, regardless of the turnout or the end result, I should say, the turnout is important. It's I do think it's our civic responsibility. I even said recently at the state level, which wasn't really popular with some of my peers because it's a lot of work. I do believe in having a referendum. I think it's incredibly important, but I do think the critically important piece is that people participate in their civic responsibility. So I'm encouraging everyone in Lewiston who is able to get there to vote, please vote or do your early ballot.
All right, agenda item, I can't speak tonight. Agenda item 19 is for future agenda items. None? We do have a list, yes. Agenda item 20, to enter into executive session to conduct Student A disciplinary hearing, Title 20A 10019 and Title 4056B.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?